Yes.
I'm surprised we don't have one people speaking on that.
Yeah, I think she can't see me. I don't think she can see me.
Ready? Did you say she's ready?
I don't know. No.
I didn't think so.
We're starting?
We're good?
We're starting?
Are you ready? Ready? Okay. That's, I need that. I need that, Rachel. I need that. Okay, hold on a minute. Where's my agenda? Where's the agenda? Oh my gosh, I got, where do you take my... I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Payne?
Here.
Mayor Proton Dusty.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Ridden?
Here.
Commissioner Susan, I'm sorry. There's an echo back here. They're trying to fix.
There is an echo.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Carl Melton?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul?
Here.
City manager Brian Caesar?
Here.
City attorney Ash.
... Oh, well, there you go. Okay, so you can have Tiger Cut. Okay. So we started out as a Tiger Cut with Hack One Forty-Seven and Almagordo. He started in two thousand twelve. To earn the highest award in Cub Scouts, the Arrow of Life. The Arrow of Life is the only Cub Scout award that can be worn on a Boy Scout uniform. In May of seventeen, he graduated with Boy Scouts and joined Truth One Forty-Seven. And he's earned thirty-one merit badges in his quest for Eagle Scout. His first aid cooking, that's really important. Movie making, nuclear science, and there's several others too. Rifle shooting, shotgun shooting, I find those very important. And robotics, automotive, there's so many here. But anyway, so he's also served as an Assistant Patrol Leader, a Patrol Leader, an Assistant Senior Patrol Leader, and a Senior Patrol Leader within his troop. So for his Eagle Scout service project, if you become an Eagle Scout, you have to do a service project. His consisted of planning, organizing, raising over two thousand dollars from local civic clubs and donations, and supervising the construction of a playground at Tulip Motocross, the local dirt brake racetrack in the Tuba Rosa. The playground consists of a playset with swings, a slide, and monkey bars. Trenton also added a tire swing and picnic table. Trenton is the fourth Eagle Scout in his family. His dad earned Eagle Scout in nineteen eighty-one. His older brother Trevor earned Eagle Scout in two thousand seven. And Trenton's other older brother Tyler earned his Eagle Scout in two thousand ten. He also races dirt bikes, races dirt bikes, and currently is racing the, I'll just go with it, two fifty cc Honda. And it says Trenton has raced throughout New Mexico and West Texas, and came in overall third place in the two fifty meters pack in his first year of racing in two thousand twenty-one. The Moriarty Motocross, the Moriarty, Moriarty, New Mexico. That is an uncle, isn't it? Trenton's goal in life is to become a professional motocross racer and a diesel mechanic. My husband was a mechanic and I served as well, so you can't go wrong with that. So he had a ceremony, and I really wanted to be there, and due to a family issue, I could not. But I wanted to make sure that Trenton would recognize because I know what an honor this is, and I know how you make it this far. And it's not just about getting the Eagle Scout, but there's so much demonstration here and so many teachable moments. It's about first your merits and sticking with it, and when times get tough, and I'm sure it wasn't always easy following through. And I think that, and also I'm sure there were some disappointments along the way. And we need to teach our young people that, that there are going to be disappointments in life, but to not give up. And I think that that is incredibly important. And so, and we don't do enough in that these days, to be honest with you. So we need to do that. So congratulations to you. We have an award here for you. This is the mayor's commendation. The City of Almagordo, New Mexico, an award to Trenton Lewis James Odom. This expression of grateful acknowledgement for your commitment to excellence by organizing and raising over two thousand dollars and supervising the construction of a playground at Tulip Motocross. We talk about your badges here, and the commendation is tendered with the sincere appreciation from your fellow citizens on this fourteen day of February two thousand twenty-three, and congratulations to you. If you guys could come down, maybe we could get a picture with him. I'm sure he would appreciate it. You want to get a picture?
Yes.
Nope, you're good right here, I think. You're good here? Nick, you can pretty much stand anywhere. Stand in front. You can't stand in front. There you go.
Look at all angles.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you, guys.
I just saw them. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda.
Is me.
Me, yes. So every year, I'm supposed to do a State of the City report. I realized today that I didn't do one last year, but in fairness, I was a mayor like a month or something, so I couldn't really... Right? Okay. Just go with it, Brian. Go with it. Right?
You're forgiven.
I was what?
You're forgiven.
Thank you. Okay. All right. But I do want to start out, I do have a report. I want to start out with a few words first and then move on to this report. It won't take me very long, so if you'll indulge me. So I want to start out with a few words about our city. Since becoming the mayor a little over a year ago now, I can't believe it's been a little over a year. I've had an opportunity to really appreciate how much time goes into this position in order to do it effectively. While I've been sitting on the commission for seven years, I can't even believe I'm saying that, but seven years now, it's not, it's really not quite the same. I've spent a lot of time reflecting on what I've been tasked with and the opportunities that have really had to make a difference in our community. And, and the opportunity to really protect, to affect the community for years, as we all do. We all really, if you think about what we do, we have an incredible opportunity to affect our city for years to come. And so I, I want everybody to know that I take this role very seriously. And when I think about who and where I was at in one point of my life, I don't even know what to say. I am incredibly humbled and honored to be sitting here. Having said that, I would also like to take a moment to thank my fellow commissioners for the opportunity to work with all of you. And, you know, we may not always disagree, I'm sorry, we may not always agree. Okay, I'm not going to lie, my daughter is calling. I don't know what she's thinking, but anyway. While we may not always agree, we're always cordial and respectful. And I have to tell you that it's really a defining difference from years past because I remember sitting in these commission meetings until midnight and then walking out and going, okay, we didn't do one thing. We got not one thing accomplished. And I appreciate that we get things accomplished here and that we're, we're cordial about it. I mean, really, what makes everything so great is when you don't agree, but you can come to a conclusion, and, and that's what we do. So having said that, I want to, yeah, I really appreciate that. Anyway, okay, moving on. I do want to address one more thing. I'm going to make this brief, but I'm not going to let this night go by without addressing it because I have received numerous calls, texts, and emails on this. So I want to briefly address the comments that have recently, recently been made about our community. This is a community that we all represent, and they were made, of course, by Superintendent Ken Moore. I think we've all heard about it now. And his comments that suggested that we are, among other things, a racist community full of fascists. And I went back today and listened to the video so I could make sure that I heard that correctly. And I have to tell you that one of the things that I love about our community is that I have friends from all walks of life. And I love that we are a giving community, and we are, and I see it every day. I work right in the thick of it every single day, and I tell you, we are a giving community. And we support each other. And like any communities, we do have our differences. Of course we do. But when I look at other communities, we're not even close. We don't even come close. There are always going to be ignorant people who might be considered racist. You're going to have that in any community you go to. I don't care where you live. If you knew where I grew up, you would agree with me that Almagordo is not a racist community. But that's far different from being a racist community. And to be honest, if you were to base your decisions solely off of some social media posts, you may think we were a horrible city full of hate because some of the comments are just outrageous. Like, I see things about me, and I don't even know who they're talking about. I have no clue because it's not me. And you might think even, honestly, like I said, they see things about me. You might think I'm subhuman, heartless, and probably the biggest racist of all, based on what I've read on Facebook. But I assure you that nothing can be farther from the truth. We are a community made up of amazing, giving people, some of the most giving I've ever seen. And we may not always agree, but that's part of what makes us so great. Since my time on the commission, I don't ever remember a hate crime. I don't ever remember. I can't think of one hate crime that I know of that's, that's been committed here. People will say things, and they'll say ignorant things. Somebody said something pretty ignorant at the school board meeting the other night, and as soon as he said it, my jaw dropped. And I don't think he even meant it the way he said it, but unfortunately, it was said. And there's nothing we can do about it. But that's different. So what I've seen in this community is us come together in a time of need. You know, six months after I started here on the commission, we had an officer killed. Six months into being a commissioner, we had an officer killed. What I saw out of that made me really proud to be representing this city because I, we saw a community that came together. We saw a community that rolled out late at night to make sure that, that that family knew that we supported them. And I think that that's important to understand. I've seen people who have had cancer and restaurants that have come together for fundraisers for that person, and everybody show up. I've seen booster clubs and, and other organizations that have raised money, and, and I've seen people come out and come together. And they're not asking, you know, what do you believe? Are you Christian? Are you not? What is your, you know, what is your political, they're not asking any of those things. They're just coming together, and that's, that's how it should be. So I completely reject what Ken Moore said. I don't know that he meant it the way he said it. I think he was probably pandering, but the fact is, he said it. And his comments and his, and, and as, as much as I'm disappointed with that, I'm equally disappointed that he's trying to sneak things in as guerrilla warfare on our children. I am a grandparent of two kids that go to the schools, and I'm super disappointed because, let me tell you something. I don't want the schools teaching my kids anything like that. That's not their job. That's my job. It's my job to make sure that my children are taught those things. Their job, reading, writing, and arithmetic. That's their job. And I'm sorry that not all parents feel that way. I'm telling you how I feel, and I have the mic right now. So, so I just, I wanted to address that because I really did receive a lot of comments, and I could not let this go without letting you know how I feel about it. We live in an amazing community where we have amazing people, and we should be proud of that. We should be celebrating that. We should not be tearing each other down. It doesn't matter what we think. People think differently. That's just how it is. It's what makes America so great. And we don't always have to agree, but we don't have to tear each other apart either. And that's all I'm going to say on that one, and now I'm going to get to what I'm really talking about, which is the state of our city. So the city of Almagordo, we have ten departments, ten directors, only ten. I can tell you who they are. And as of today, we have three hundred and fifty-five employees. As with many cities around the country, we, of course, struggled with staffing. I think we all realize that. And it only seemed to be exasperated, excuse me, by COVID-nineteen pandemic. Rather than place a Band-Aid on the most significant issue of salaries, we began the year with a comprehensive salary study in which we contracted with an outside, with an outside company. This much-needed study was the first of its kind in our city since nineteen ninety-eight. Based on the recommendations from the final report, the commission passed a budget resolution that included some raises for almost every position, some kind of raise for almost every position in our city. This bold move, along with an aggressive advertising push, it seems to be working. So we began two thousand twenty-two with a vacancy of over eighty positions. And today, we can share that our current vacancy count, as of the time I wrote this anyway, was down to below thirty-five. And it may even be less than that now. So this is good news for our employees, but of course, we still have work to do. But I was looking at the openings today, and we really have shrunk that number a lot. So what we're doing is working. Our police department is seeing a slight rise in officers, however. Of course, with any departments all over the country, we still have openings. The current officer count is forty-four with four more in the pipeline. I don't know if they're still in the pipeline. They were in the pipeline. Am I right? Six in the pipeline. Okay, perfect. That's even better. That sounds even better. And so to put this in perspective, ideally, we'd like to see that number at fifty-nine. Then we'd be considered full staff. This is another area where we, where we have rolled out an aggressive advertising campaign to promote our city and our department. In addition, our department has added the brand-new position of police service aides. While not certified officers, these individuals support our department and our officers by handling various traffic and routine issues, making our officers available for cases that require the work of a certified officer. Along those same lines, the police department received a slight boost from our general fund when the commission voted unanimously to designate the GRT proceeds from the marijuana sales to the police department to be used at the chief's discretion and with the approval of the city manager. And I'm super proud of that. I think we did the right thing. And we also saw some staffing changes in, some staffing changes in two thousand twenty-two. Public Works was split into two departments. We now have Nancy Bechler, who is the director of Public Works, and Dave Nunley is now the utilities director. And also being split is the community services and a newly created position of Parks and Recreation. By separating these positions, the city will be in a position to place a greater emphasis on quality-of-life issues, activities, and amenities that are provided to the citizens of Almagordo. PSAP, so proud of this one. Another major accomplishment in our city was the establishment of the Public Safety Access Point, or PSAP. This project has been talked about for years but could never quite get off the ground. To explain it in simple terms, when you call for help, depending on where you live in the city or the county, you may get a different dispatch center. With the establishment of PSAP, we will now have one dispatch center that will essentially be its own entity, which will be fiscally administered by the county. And I wasn't quite sure how to word that, but the county will be responsible as the fiscal agent. So this could not have been possible without the cooperative partnership of the city and county, specifically the positive working relationship of Chief Richie Denton and Sheriff David Black, who deserve many accolades for their willingness to put their community first. And for those of you who have ever tracked PSAP, how long did that take? Many years.
Over twenty-three, I believe.
Over twenty-three years to get that done. Yeah. I know, it doesn't seem like it, but that was a long time, and it's finally happening. Super excited. So some of the projects, several projects were also started and/or completed in two thousand twenty-two. Most notable, of course, is Benita Lake. While not fully operational, the major cleanup removal of debris was completed and brought back to pre-flood conditions. While the lake was down, staff took advantage of that opportunity, and with funding from a grant, work, work was completed to rehabilitate and enhance the intake tower, replace the belving and piping, and eliminate the temporary bypass pipeline. In addition, enhancements were made to the lake's south side to provide easier access for staff and lake visitors. Visitors may resume day use activities this summer. City staff is in active negotiations with New Mexico Fish and Game Department for the restocking of the lake, and the campgrounds will still be closed until further notice. That is good news for, for visitors. The scenic extension is another project that was completed in late two thousand twenty-two. This project has been in the works for several years and was held up due to an inability to communicate with Union Pacific. The regulations required that in order to open a railroad crossing, the city was required to close two others. Unfortunately, we only had one that we could close at the A Street Crossing. This brought negotiations to a standstill. One of our citizens, Sue Danakas, many of you know her, made this her goal and literally for years, called Union Pacific until we got someone to work with us. Through her persistence and the incredible work of our staff, we completed this project. Because this section of the road extends scenic out to Mesa Verde area, it will allow access, it'll allow for easier access for residents living and working in that area and those considering other economic development projects. While the city's part, while the city's part is complete, the road will be open once PNM approves the plans and can complete the electrical extension needed for Union Pacific to operate. The cost of this project was just under four million dollars and was paid through local funding. Alameda Park irrigation renovations. This project includes replacing and upgrading sprinkler irrigations from the north end of the zoo to the Toy Train Depot. Work is underway and is scheduled to be completed in July of twenty-three. The cost of this project was around eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and also locally funded. ADA-compliant sidewalks. This is a one-point-seven-million-dollar project, and it'll install projects, curb, and gutter, as well as ADA-compliant ramps, driveways, and asphalt, patching between Second and A Street in the area of New York Avenue to Texas Avenue. Currently, the design has been completed and the contract's been awarded, and our staff, congratulations. And our staff, congratulations to our staff, especially Debbie Osborne. She was successfully awarded a $500,000 Community Development Block Grant to fund a portion of this project. And I believe $500,000 is the maximum that we can get for that. So she got the maximum. Of course, one of my passions as mayor has been to clean up our city. We find a lot of property owners that own property in our city, but they live in other cities and they have no connection to those properties. Stella's shaking her head because she knows what I'm talking about. They don't have any connections to those properties. And therefore, they don't take care of those properties and we're stuck with them. We may be little old Almagordo, but we have a right to a beautiful, clean city. And if they're not going to take care of it, then apparently we have to. So that's what's happened. Of course, it can always be frustrating for staff and, and the residents. We field so many calls for code enforcement. I know I personally do. So we want to assure our citizens that we're working on enforcing these ordinance that are currently in place and putting property owners on notice, that we will take action. I often say that I believe we have a constitutional right when it comes to our properties. However, when somebody else's perceived constitutional rights infringe on my constitutional rights, then it becomes an issue and we need to, we need to do something about it. So tearing down dilapidated structures is never easy and not something we, as a commission, take lightly. Getting something like this done can take months or even years as we ensure due process for every property owner. In 2022, we were able to successfully tear down a total of five properties in various parts of our city. And we're not done yet. The cost to date for the city to do those five properties is $235,000. And we can plan to continue to move forward so that abandoned, dilapidated, and often dangerous structures are no longer a health and safety issue for any of our residents. Moving to long-term plans, I will, I promise I'll make this brief. No, I don't, but I'll try. I will share that our community service department has created a community master plan. This comprehensive plan is a vision of what we want our community to look like going forward. This plan is made based on several factors, including economic trends, demographics, housing, transportation, and land development. With this more extensive plan, master plans are being created for specific critical areas. Water, of course, water is always a concern and we recognize we need to invest time in creating a plan, so there's a path going forward. The last time any updates to a water master plan were made was in 1986. Yeah. So as you can see, this was long overdue. Once this has been completed, our citizens can feel confident knowing that we're taking steps to be proactive rather than being reactive. There's been parts of this done, but there has never, there has not been an actual real master plan since 1986. Sewer, along the same lines, the master plan for, of water, we're updating and revising the master plan for sewer. The last revision on this plan was in 2008, or 2000, 2005. Oh, where I go, 2008, 2005. And of course, this is a critical area in our community. Drainage, this is huge. If you've lived here for any length of time, you've quickly learned that drainage is always a topic of conversation after a significant rain. Up until this point, there has never been a comprehensive drainage master plan. We're excited to announce that for the first time ever, we're creating one to address our city's current and future needs. Street maintenance, our current plan is on hold pending the creation of a transportation master plan that will focus on evaluating existing roadways to determine conditions and how to move forward with repair and replacement. Once this is done, then we can resume work based on those results. It's important to note that included in all of the above-mentioned plans is a consideration for all the other plans. So they didn't create all these separate plans without considering all the other plans, so they all tie in together. So this should all work together, which has been another problem in the past. So not just thinking about one, but thinking about all of them. So what's in store? A community swimming pool. Assessment and preliminary design are underway and options will be presented to the commission at a future date for constructing a new community swimming pool. For those of you that have followed this, you remember a few years back, we had to eliminate our pool that we used in the winter months and that was due to a change in health and safety regulations. At the time, we realized that it was cost prohibitive to place the structure, to replace the structure with something more up-to-date, so the commission was forced to put the project on hold. We're now ready to revisit the possibility of a brand-new community pool equipped with an entirely up-to-date cover, so our citizens can enjoy it year-round. Ed Brabson Balloon Park, design is currently underway to make it a more realistic usable event venue. Many options are being explored to ensure everything is considered. When finished, this space will be available for public rental and use as well. The Great Blocks Project. This project focuses on New York Avenue and begins on the north side of the intersection at 10th Street and extends south to 8th Street. A portion of 9th Street between New York Avenue and White Sands Boulevard is also included in this project. The contractor will provide, install, and construct decorative pavements, including integral-colored concrete paving and specialty finishes installed in vehicular and non-vehicular conditions, asphalt paving, striping, regulatory signage, decorative monuments, concrete curb and gutter, accessible curb, ramps, install site furnishings, planting, automatic irrigation system, decorative light bulbs, and associated electrical work. Okay, that's code for it's going to look really good when it's done. That's what that means. Okay. So the last thing I want to mention are various ordinances. There's been much focus on being as business-friendly as possible regarding interaction with our business owners and citizens in general. As part of our ongoing commitment to our community, we're now beginning to do a comprehensive review of all of our building standards and city ordinances to ensure that we are using best practices and delivering fair and equitable treatment as efficiently as possible. Our most current focus includes the tech standards, of course, that were done in 2022. The city contracted with an outside company and gathered input from citizens and builders. And they have assembled, we have assembled a manual of the most up-to-date standards in the industry with plans to include a revision schedule to ensure that going forward, our city will always follow best practices and the latest industry standards. Code enforcement, we're conducting a comprehensive review of our code enforcement ordinances and procedures. This review is only the third since its inception in 1960, with the last review done in 2008. When completed, this will allow our citizens to easily determine what is considered either acceptable or a violation. It will also ensure that there are no gray areas and that all property owners are held to the same standard. Okay. And just a quick example, a couple of months ago, Brian and I were called out to a subdivision that's behind an apartment complex here in Almagordo that many people probably don't even know is there. And when we got there, the homeowner was concerned because there was raw sewage coming up through the street. You know what the problem is? The problem is the city didn't own the street. We had never taken possession of it and we didn't know that it was there other than we had turned water on to that development. Those are the kinds of things that have happened in the past. And we told the homeowner, unfortunately, if that main line breaks, all we can do is shut water off to all these houses around here. We can't repair it because it's not our street to repair. We're trying to prevent that going forward and we're trying to ensure that everybody follows those same standards. I felt bad for them because they all own houses on that street. And I was really worried that they were going to have a water line break and we weren't going to be able to do anything about it. And we were not even sure who to direct them to, other than we could, well, Brian, not me, because I know nothing, but Brian could see that the water line tied into the apartment complex in the front. So we suggested they go talk to them, that maybe they own the street. We don't know. But, but those are the kinds of things that we're, we're trying to be proactive so that those things don't happen in the future. Our water ordinance. While pieces of this ordinance have been revised many times, there has never been a comprehensive review of this entire ordinance. What this did was actually create greater confusion as changes were made without consideration of how this would affect other parts of the ordinance. The latest review will include not only the rates, but the most up-to-date state and federal regulations and standards. And in addition, staff will present recommendations for a path going forward, which will include an actual plan built, built-in to ensure that this ordinance is reviewed every three years. Again, it's important that we not only focus on the now, but we also focus on our future. And then the last thing I want to say is, and I struggled with this because I can't find the right words, but it, and it is, it's hard to find the right words to explain how much I appreciate our city staff. I am not a mushy-gushy person and I'm not getting mushy now, but I will tell you this. The way that they research and study and present us with clear, complete information, it really does make it easier. It's clear, from this report, just this report, that they have been busy. And I am so grateful for what's been accomplished. And it's only because of the dedication of our city, that our city staff is on and the path that they want for much success. So I can only hope that our entire community understands what amazing people we have working here. And all I can say is a sincere and heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you for all you do. And that's all I have. We are going to move on to. We do have one person signed up, but she's signed up, I think, to speak on item four. So if you don't mind, I'll just wait and let you speak on that when that item comes up. Is that okay? Okay, perfect. Okay. With that, I don't have any more public comment. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
Okay, just a couple of items, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. This week, myself, staff, finance director, we are in our internal budget meetings preparing for the budget that we presented to you, actually in just a couple of months. The only, excuse me, the only other item I had, and this has been a topic that has come up once or twice over the past six, six or so months, the old Holiday Inn Express over by Applebee's that caught, actually has caught on fire a couple of times now. But we are finally to the point. I signed the contract with Southwest Abatement yesterday. That contract is in round figures, the amount of $260,000. They will be coming in to just remove the burned portion of the Holiday Inn Express. That is not the entire complex. It's just the, the area that, that caught fire and collapsed. We are still awaiting the final proposal for the rest of the, of the old motel. And I'll bring that information forward. Obviously, that is not something we have, we have budgeted in our abatement line item. We do have the 260, so that is, that is moving forward. And we'll be able to, once that is complete, move the, the temporary fencing back farther from the Applebee's and, not the Waffle House, the IHOP. And like I said, as soon as we have the information, we'll hopefully have it so we can incorporate it into the upcoming budget. But it is going to be a very expensive project to take down the remaining of the, the remaining structures that are on that property. There is asbestos throughout. There is no way to go in and do a traditional abatement. So it will have to be taken down, much as the old Sahara Apartments where, where they encapsulate it, spray the, the foam, and everything gets bagged and hauled out to landfill. And that's a lot of building to take down.
We haven't heard from the property owner.
The property owner is not, unless Stella has heard recently, which I don't think she has. They are not responding to us. They're not responding to the state. They are nowhere in Almagordo or in New Mexico, for that matter. I think the last we had, they were in California. Is that correct? Yeah.
So they just collected their insurance and took off, huh? Why not? Why not?
What type of recourse do we have against that?
Just like the other dilapidated structures that have come down, we already have liens against this property for past violations. With this, in round figures, $260,000. As soon as that work is performed and we pay the, pay the contractor, we'll place an additional lien on the property in that amount. And as we continue forward, ultimately, we will have to go to court for, for clothes on the lien or ask the courts to foreclose. We'll take possession of the property and sell and try and recoup some of the, some of the cost. I don't believe we'll be able to recoup the, the full cost to abate the property. But it's something that needs to be removed from the community.
Be a great place for apartments, wouldn't it? Just a thought. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. And that's it? Okay. We will move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything? Commissioner McDonough?
I have one thing. This past week, Ed and I were able to go to Santa Fe for the New Mexico Main Street Winter Conference. And we attended with a couple of people from Main Street. I, I see Claudia in the audience. And it was really an eye-opener. One of the things I'd like to say, Almagordo is not far, far behind. We have a great Main Street group. And when I went up there, I saw the, the number of people that they've had since I've been in office, which has been over three years. So they're still the same group, with the exception of the executive director. And so I, I really felt like it was really an eye-opener for us to see how Almagordo is doing. There are other cities that are, are moving along too. I don't want to take away from what I saw. The speakers were excellent. They were exciting and they had just a lot of energy. So I would like to say thank you to the Main Street for bringing that up. I did bring back material for the city of Almagordo and I gave it to Brian. And I told him I had to hold on to the book because I'd be sitting up here stumbling for words. But it was an excellent conference. And I would say, if anybody else gets a chance for the next conference, to go and see how we measure up to other, other cities in, in town, I mean, in the state. So I'll give you the book after the meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? I, I really wanted to go, but this week I'm going up for the municipal league training. And it's probably a good thing I didn't plan that for last week because I had a serious family emergency last week. So I would have had to cancel and then I would have just looked silly. So I'm glad I didn't, but thank you for going. And I would love to sit at some point and share what you learned because, you know, Main Street has always been pretty important to me as well. And they're doing a phenomenal job down there. And if you have not been downtown lately, you're missing something because it's pretty, pretty spectacular. And they're having a lot of great events down there. So I encourage everybody to do that. I did, and I don't know if I mentioned this at the last meeting, but just to let everybody know, I did go up to Santa Fe for opening session. And I hung out with Commissioner Markort for the day. That was fun. And we were able to watch the Senate side. I'm going to try the training that I'm going to on Friday. It ends at noon and then I'm going to try to head over to the Roundhouse and watch the, if there's anything to watch, I'm going to watch the House side. And then I'm planning on going. And then I'm planning on going up one more time sometime in March. So, yeah, so I'm doing that, and other than that, I can't think of anything else. Nobody has anything? No? Okay, great. All right. Well, we're going to move on then to the consent agenda. I believe we're pulling item four. Nobody else says I will? Just get it out of the way. So we're going to pull item four. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item four?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Melton. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Rogen?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to the item pulled from the consent agenda, item four, consider and act upon the adoption and final publication of ordinance 1666. I do not like that ordinance number. Okay. Repealing chapter 23, article 23 dash zero two, the lodger's tax. And Stephanie Hernandez and Evelyn, huh, have some information for us? Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. First, we have one person signed up for that, I apologize. Sandy, is it Rodwick? Okay, Sandy Rodwick, if you want to come up here? If you want to state your name for the record?
Sandy Rodwick, I'm at the Alamogordo.
Okay. Oh. Oh my gosh, I'm so glad to meet you in person. Oh my gosh. Okay, I just put a face with a name. Yes, who are you?
I'm good, I'm good. However, so first I'm here, so I'm thinking you all just voted, so I don't know that this will help.
Oh, no, we pulled it off to talk about it. We haven't voted on this yet. Yeah. No, 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 we pulled, we have not voted on it yet. No, 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 no.
So I'm here this evening to share my concerns about getting rid of lodger's tax. And lodger's tax is just a pass-through to the city from our guests. I was told that the city feels that there are too many restrictions on how these dollars are spent. As I read the ordinance that was emailed to me, I don't see the restrictions, and just wondered if the restrictions could be amended. Without these dollars being used to help promote our great city for tourism, could be affected. I say could be affected because I have not done the research, and the tourism department would know better than I, but I understand that the city's already done away with that position. With these dollars ads, with these dollars, ads were placed in magazines that went to our neighboring states and beyond. And as people arrive, they are greeted with great rack cards, brochures, to share about our town, the things that people pick up in hotel lobbies and campground registration areas. People know about White Sands, but what about the other great things around our city to keep our guests here for another night or two? This is where more revenue comes in as they pay for admission, buy a souvenir, or go shopping at our grocery stores. As I know, I know as for our budget, does not allow to print these great materials that we've done in the past. We do our best to share verbally with folks that people want to go to their campers, rooms, and relax and plan for their next day. Not everyone is tech savvy, so have these brochures is very important. I was told that marketing and advertising would not be hurt during the process, but if you've already eliminated the position, I feel it's already been hurt. So I thank you for your time.
So I would encourage you to listen to these two ladies, because there is a plan, and there's a good plan, so it's not going away. It's absolutely not. So if you, if you would like, they're going to give us some information on that.
Thanks.
So, yeah, just, yeah, and certainly if you have any questions, you can ask, but they are going to give us some information on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have lots of information for you.
I know.
So, good evening, Mayor. Before you, as a second reading to repeal the ordinance, but before I stand for questions, I want to address some of the false information that's been circulating, circulating through the community. What is being presented is we are doing away with tourism, making negative changes to tourism, or that we don't care about tourism, that we have eliminated the tourism position that was previously held by Michelle Bordeaux, that we are dividing the duties between Evelyn and I, the finance director and assistant city manager, and that we are finding the funding by cutting waste from other departments. I want to put on the record, we are not getting rid of tourism. That is not true. That is false information. In fact, where we had one person doing it, as well as that same person was doing marketing and communications, we pulled out the tourism, and we have a separate position in addition to myself and Evelyn. So where we had one, we now have three. It is, it is a fundamental part of our jobs and an important part of our community. The position is in finance, so that's how it was under me, and I went to finance in September of 2002. We have not hired that person because we wanted to look at the tourism and revamp the program, but we do plan on hiring. Evelyn and I have been looking to do a five-year comprehensive plan. As you've heard the mayor speak, we're doing that throughout the city. So this isn't something that's new, it's just something that is needed, especially for our tourism. We are refor, refocusing our tourism efforts for what suits Alamogordo. We don't like the cookie cutter advertising that has to be done. We are not cutting waste from all the departments just to fund this position, to fund marketing, tourism, or advertising. It's getting convoluted, it's two separate independent events, I guess you could say. City manager directed staff, that all of us, all directors, have to look at each and every department, each line item, to look at the policies, see if they make sense, are they business-friendly, are they conducive to our citizens? We have come up with better plans in all our areas. As you were, as the mayor had said, we split up two very big departments so that we could be proactive rather than reactive, because when departments get that big, that's pretty much all you're doing is putting out fires. We took out all the license, business licensing requirements and the fees associated with that, and we're looking at all of our ordinances. So lodger's tax, we are, is just valid to the rotation, and we're looking at all the hundreds of areas. So again, it's all gone all the way up to the state. I want to make it very clear, we are not getting rid of tourism. We are making it inclusive of all businesses within the city. We are in all of, kind of pretty robust program. I also want to mention some of the reasons that we felt this was a good idea to bring it to you. We did not bring it to you half-heartedly, we did a lot of research and a lot of thought. Neither Evelyn nor I could find any correlation between the advertising spent through lodger's tax on the effect of the lodger's tax or GRT. What we could clearly see is there is a correlation to what happens on base. The best example is the refugees. All the advertising that was hap, that happened through the lodger's tax was to put heads in beds. We discovered that many programs were shot down by the previous tourism liaison, because it was promoted day trips and not overnight heads in beds. We think that is fundamentally flawed, like, I can't say that loud enough. We want people to come to our city, to us, a day trip, overnight trip, we want people here. Visit our zoo, visit our parks, we have Fourth Fridays, Christmas on Main Street, we have a lot of events. I'm sure everyone up here and in this room has gone to Cloudcroft or Rialdo, so spent money, spent time, had a good time, but still came home to sleep in their own beds. That's why we believe it's flawed. The majority of the advertising was to promote businesses outside the city limits. If money is spent outside the city limits, it doesn't help us. We do not get any GRT from that. It is hard for us to justify spending that much money on businesses outside the city when you can drive right through the bypass, never set foot in Alamogordo, never spend a dollar in Alamogordo. That does not help us at all. And I understand that some of the things that we are doing and saying is offending people, and I can promise you that is not our intent. You, as city commission, gives us direction that we need to ask these hard questions, analyze the data, present it to you. We need to look at the spending patterns, and we have to come up with solutions, and we have to come up with good data so that we can make those informed decisions. We should not just be doing things because we can, because it's there, we should not be spending money because it's there. In the previous meeting, we talked about waste, that the time constraints on the state statute and the restrictions on the funding. But I also want to discuss, we had, that wasn't the only considerations that we had. We discussed, we asked the question, actually, is the lodger's tax double taxation? In our opinion, it is, because GRT is charged and the lodger's tax is charged. We believe that if our vision and our plan to revamp the tourism program is successful, we believe that it will be, that our GRT will naturally grow up, go, go up, not, and it'll help all the businesses, it'll help the city. We also, and I'm sure everybody here remembers the detrimental effects that COVID had, at one point, lodger, the lodging industry had to go down to 25% capacity, and then they slowly creeped up to 50% capacity and then 75% capacity. There was at least one local hotel that had come to the city and was struggling and asked us to waive the lodger's tax and let them keep the revenue. Per ordinance, at that time, we could not do that. They are still struggling with some of the effects of COVID. For years, other considerations, for years, we've been hearing that we lose people to Las Cruces who come visit White Sands. I just want to give you a couple of, a couple of numbers here. In Las Cruces, if you spend, if you spend the night there, taxes come out to 16%. If you go to Rialdo, so the taxes come out to 15%. In Alamogordo, if commission repeals this tax, our tax will be 8% on the ta, if they choose to reduce their prices. Of course, they have the option to keep the 5% as a service fee, but 8% in Alamogordo as opposed to 16% in Las Cruces. That's making our town the more favorable choice, and if anybody has traveled, you know that every dollar counts, especially if you have family that you're traveling with. Also, and it's come up recently, if you Google White Sands National Park, you get Las Cruces, not Alamogordo. That is true, but Las Cruces pays for that top spot. There has never been a fully developed plan to change that narrative by using the lodger's tax. It's been a complaint, it's been a talking point, but it's never been a real plan. Working with Evelyn and our new marketing person, her name is Bailey, we are fleshing that plan out fully. We are fleshing it out to be inclusive of businesses, all of them within the city. We have a tentative solid plan that we will include in our five-year plan, but we think that it should be up and running in 12 months. It includes a web, website, we purchased a domain, White Sands.
White Sands National Park dot com.
White Sands National Park dot com. That's the domain that we will be rolling out here in the next 12 months, I hope, and that it will be inclusive of all of our business partners within Alamogordo. Should commission repeal this tax, our plan moving forward to include the domain is that I have been very big on sports tourism. I've read a lot about it, I've wanted a plan for long, and it's never come to fruition until now. We have spoken to, I can't think of the company, I know his name is JD Wood, and he is giving us a plan and hopes to have a market analysis and marketing opportunity for sports, for sports complexes, and along with that comes tournaments that they opt into because of their, their network. We will also be promoting everything Alamogordo, everything, restaurants, businesses, and yes, we will be promoting our lodging industry as well. We will also be promoting our local attractions and events. I want to just want everyone here to consider that our zoo, on a bad week, brings in 700 visitors a week. On a good week, it's upward of 2,500 or more. Our Gus McRae event that happened in November had 880 participants. They were from five different states and 66 different cities. Our civic center just recently hosted a karate tournament. There were six New Mexico states, six New Mexico cities, three Arizona cities, and two Texas cities. We plan to have two or more, we have two more of those planned. When we do our Fourth Fridays, there's an average of about 800 people. Our, the Fourth of July event that we hosted, it had about 8,000, or 4,000, I'm sorry, and the Zoo Boo had about 4,000 as well. None of these were promoted the way it should have been. We have, we need to get our events back into the city, we need to include tournaments, competitions, and we need to just be, we need to increase the quality of life for our citizens and make a welcoming environment for our guests. Alamogordo is a unique city. Although we like to compare ourselves to our neighboring communities, we acknowledge and pride ourselves on being small enough to have that hometown feel and big enough to encourage hosts, to encourage and host events and the unique experiences. I have so much more I could possibly say, but I know Evelyn wants to chime in, so I'll let Evelyn, I'll let Evelyn take the floor, and then we'll stand for questions.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I will be quick because I know Stephanie had a lot. So I just wanted to talk about what we've been doing, who I've been working with recently about the tourism. Again, to second what Stephanie was saying, we are not doing away with tourism. Either way that you vote tonight, we will have a tourism program. You're just determining how we're going to fund it and what parameters we're going to operate that program within. We want to be able to open those parameters, to be able to embrace everything that goes on our community. I grew up here, and up until this Christmas, I really hadn't shopped local here, but I'd been involved with tourism at that point for about three months, and so I, I went to the local bodega, I went to Roadrunner Emporium, I went to the Bluestone, I even went to our gift shop at the zoo. All the things that I had learned starting with tourism and what we needed to look at to push, and I think we need to consider that trend and build that trend out. If those people are just coming up here for a day, if they're just going to come have a meal, shop in our local stores, then we need to encourage their feet on the street just as much as we need to encourage their head in the bed. And so I really would like to say, you know, we still plan on participating in the co-op program that's put on by the tourism department, that's the New Mexico True program, that's what you see and what they promote nationally. It's a great program, and of course, we don't want to move away from it, we just want to fund it differently. We want to finish the development of the White Sands Partnership Program like Stephanie talked about, where we can sign people up and we can push things through our website and have an active local website that talks about White Sands, that gives you local information about coming to visit that park. We want to develop a program to help compete for travel groups, the small to medium-sized bus tours, where we can develop the literature and items necessary to compete at the trade shows, attend those trade shows, and get our name out there, that if you're coming in with a group for the weekend, we're a perfect place to be for a couple nights. We can even tie that in with our partnership that we have with Tularosa Basin Historical Society, La Luz Pottery, all of these items that the Tularosa Basin Society has so much information that we can help develop those. The other thing that we'd also like to look at, similar to what Stephanie was talking about, is in the day trips, is developing a robust local tourism program, getting all of us back out there with our families and with our visiting family members. When's the last time you went to Oliver Lee State Park, or went to the Space Hall, or went to some of these places that we used to go all the time when we were kids because there were, you know, field trips and everything like that? Let's get those back in our, our mind, so that when our family does come to visit, that's where we're taking them, and that's where then they're telling their friends. We also want to continue to develop our relationships with local organizations to support their events, develop day trip itineraries and campaigns to be able to push out to our drivable communities, push out to El Paso, push out to Las Cruces and say, hey, drive over here for the day. We know we drive over there for the day, let's try and get them to come over here. Push out to El Paso, push out to Las Cruces and say, hey, drive over here.